And whatever it is. Holy cow, Michelson, you're wearing a glasses? You always wear glasses?
Yeah, where's your pink ones?
I left them in the car.
I must not have remembered it. We got a bunch of old fogies working here, Tom. Look at you, you and Dicker, the only ones that don't have glasses.
Yeah.
You guys were ready, right? All right.
We do?
We do.
I think we did. Do we have serious business?
That's not any funny, gotta be serious.
I love when Mike is working.
Have fun while you're doing work.
That's right.
All right, I will call the April 15th meeting of the West Des Moines City Council to order and invite you to join us, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Okay, please sign in.
Mayor Protam needs to sign in. Five members present.
Okay, Ryan, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Your Honor.
Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion on the agenda?
So move.
Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, now is the time for Citizens Forum, for anybody that would like to address the City Council on any item that is not considered new business or public hearings. Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address. Okay, seeing no citizen participation, we'll move on to Mayor, Council, Manager Reports. We will start out with Sally Dix from Bravo of Greater Des Moines. Sally?
Is there, so I can't see the presentation, do you have it?
They'll have to switch it in there. Presentation's minimized on the microphone.
Okay.
If you just open it up and start the slideshow.
There we go.
You should be able to get it up on the screen.
Okay.
There we go.
Super. Everybody got it? Great. Well, thank you all very much for the opportunity to present tonight. I do have the chance to work very closely with Jim Sandiger, who represents the city of West Des Moines, serving as the President of the Bravo Board, so we get some great input and leadership from him. But I'm delighted to have the chance to tell you a little bit more about what we're doing, a little bit more in depth. We have a lot going on. I am gonna try to be brief, I know you have a lot to do, but as there are a couple of new members or people that may not be familiar, I just want to do a quick recresher about Bravo's history. Bravo is funded almost entirely with hotel motel tax revenue. About 99% of our revenue is from the communities that support us. We started with nine local government partners, we now have 17 local government partners. And we continue to act as a steward for the funds that our cities contribute. Bravo is able to leverage the resources of the region in stronger, higher impact investments in arts and culture than each individual community would be able to do on their own. We execute a really complex funding process, it's a little harder to sit on the table that we, on the side of the table that we sit on than some people might think. It's a complex funding process to make sure that we are transparent and accountable with the resources you entrust us with. And it allows you to focus on things that City Councils are better positioned to do. I hate to only spend one slide on our grants because it is our core and primary function and it is the critical reason we were formed. And it does sometimes sound simple, but I love to put this up there to say that 95% of the revenue that has come in from our 2080 partners has been directly granted out over the years. We've granted almost 900 grants totaling more than $35 million. We are really and truly putting the dollars you're investing in Bravo to work in the community. We've been able to do all of that with a staff of three. We do have some expectation of adding at least one person, but we are very mindful of this ratio and continuing to be respectful of the investments that you're making ultimately in your communities through Bravo. I'd like to think that there is some general appreciation for the quality of life aspect that arts and culture drive. I think we all know that it makes our communities better places to live and work and play. But it's also important that we talk about the economic impact of the organizations that Bravo is supporting. We have a history of funding economic impact studies to be sure we can tell this other side of the story. The most recent one that we have was released in June of 2017. You can see from the slide that the organizations Bravo supports generated $185 million worth of economic revenue that year, generated, supported 5,677 jobs. And the statistic that we love to show, particularly in this setting, is the local and state governments received $16.8 million in revenue directly as a result of the economic activity from those nonprofit organizations.
And that's just one year.
That's just one year, yep. So there is sometimes a myth that the arts organizations are on the take and they're being supported by social investments and public investments, when in fact they really are turning around tremendous ROI. In this year Bravo invested approximately $3.5 million in these organizations and they turned it into $185 million worth of economic impact. So I think there's a good story to be told there.
Sally, not to get bogged down too much on the study and how you derive this economic impact, but, I mean, what's done? You take a look at how many people go to the Civic Center, for example, and is there some kind of a survey that says that, you know, they go out to dinner before, or they stay in a hotel?
Yep.
Or is there just a multiplier effect that is added to this? Or how does that?
Yep, so better economists than me worked on this. We did this in collaboration with Americans for the Arts. This was Arts and Economic Prosperity 5, it's the fifth time that they've done this. It's the first time Bravo has participated and that our region has participated. It allowed us not only to find out the economic impact of our community, but also to be able to benchmark against more than 200 other communities across the country. I can send you the methodology for the study, it's fairly complex, but 65 local organizations participated by answering survey questions about just exactly those types of things. We worked on that over the course of several months and then submitted all of the data to Americans for the Arts. They then crunched that data through their existing models and gave us the information back.
Okay, thank you.
So, as successful as Bravo has been at distributing funds, as with any organization, we know that we do need to evolve in order to stay relevant. We know that grant making alone is not enough to sustain Bravo in this very competitive environment for public funds. We have to demonstrate that we're relevant and responsive to meeting larger community objectives as they change. For us, the larger community objectives have been defined by Capital Crossroads. I think you're probably all familiar with that effort. More than 150 priorities identified for the region. There are eight in that report, though, that were identified as catalyst priorities, the things that if we concentrate the most on will drive our community further fastest. What Bravo then did is we conducted a regional cultural assessment to say, how can we directly align arts and culture with these existing identified priorities? The thought being that arts and culture are not separate from achieving regional objectives, they are integral to achieving regional objectives. And we needed to make sure that we were drawing clear lines on behalf of our organizations and communities for the investments that you all are making. Four regional cultural priorities were identified, and with this new context Bravo has evolved how we do what we do. First, program evolution. Again, our core and primary business is grant making and investing in cultural and community organizations. With that, we've maintained our strong foundation of unrestricted operating grants, which is the vast majority of funding that Bravo does. And we also will continue our capital campaign and project grants, knowing that those are important dollars, so critical in fact that they are actually outlined in our 2080 agreement. We have, however, with the changing regional priorities, added grant programs over the last couple of years. The idea being that we want to recognize that a strong region is supported by strong local municipalities, and we need to increase ways to get dollars out to communities that may not have a large base of arts organizations, easily eligible for support. We had a local arts program grant that we ran a two-year pilot program on, and then this year we have a public art grant program. This is the first time that we've ever done that. This public art grant program is only open to 2080 local partner governments. It is not accessible to any of our other cultural partners. So this is a way that hopefully we are giving a nod to those who are investing in us along the way. In addition to the grant making evolution, we've also begun intentional work in the, what we sort of call the more-than-grant-making space. Through the regional cultural assessment, we heard loud and clear that though our role is and should remain as a funder, it's time for us to take on more than grant making. Bravo is being called to be a leader and drive conversations and make community change in addition to community investments. It was very interesting through our process that Benny perceived that Bravo was already doing that, we just are now being a little bit more intentional. A couple of examples of how that work might come to life are the economic impact study I just mentioned and the regional cultural assessment. It was right and appropriate for Bravo to invest in that, no other organization could have done that. And simply by having those data points, we have advanced arts and culture in our region. So, what's next for Bravo is thanks to your investments, we have some very exciting things ahead. First, I'm pleased to say that Bravo Greater Des Moines has been selected as one of two national pilot partners for an expansion of an Americans for the Arts program called the Diversity in Arts Leadership Program. It's an internship program intended to expand access to those traditionally untapped for arts leadership positions. It's been running successfully for 20 years in New York City. It is expanding this year to the New Jersey Arts Council and Bravo Greater Des Moines, and over the next five years, they hope to have seven additional expansion sites. But we're in year one of a new pilot program. I'm really excited to share, actually you'll be sort of the first to know, that we will be placing an intern this summer with Sally Orkies in the West Des Moines Public Art Division. She's got, we just announced that today. So we're very excited that one of our seven interns will be here in West Des Moines, working with your community on your great public art.
Which would be a great perspective, because it's not just an arts organization, it's arts within a governmental entity.
Yep.
I think that's really cool.
Which speaks to the larger purpose, there's no more, no one works in silos anymore. And if we continue to train people to only work in an arts organization, they won't thrive in a community. So we need to make sure that we're spreading the work that we're doing and the relevance of arts and culture far beyond the traditional 501(c) arts and culture organizations. That's still our sweet spot, we know that that's where we need to stay and what we need to support, but we also know that there's opportunity for growth and change. So we're very excited, and Sally has been a great partner to Bravo, advising us on many different occasions, so we're delighted to continue working with her. In addition, we are continuing to work on better understanding the creative economy. This was an interesting outcome of the regional cultural assessment. We know we have a strong entrepreneurial climate in Greater Des Moines, but we also found out that our artists and creative professionals are not feeling connected to that, they don't feel like they have the resources that they need. As you think about that workforce pipeline, making sure that we have creative professionals that can think outside the box, problem solve, we know that we need to find out what the gap is and see how we might be able to advance and support that. Should have results on that any day now, and I look forward to sharing the path forward that we might explore. And then third, we continue, we are always iterating on the community investment side. I don't want anyone to ever think that we do a grant cycle the same way twice. In my five years, that's never happened. We will continue to make sure that we're staying relevant with our investing, continuing to challenge our organizations to be worthy of the funds you have entrusted in us, and that we are entrusting in them on behalf of the region. So that's about 18 months of work in nine slides. Does anyone have any questions?
What?
First of all, please tell us what Bravo has done and what we continue to do. You're a fantastic advocate for the organization, what you can do.
I do have a couple of questions. As it relates to school, I mean, maybe you're not in schools, I never mind who stands as top arts and culture as the first thing that's got in the educational system. And I also wonder whether that it's arts and culture that helps build creativity with our young minds and brains. Is there ever, or is that under the Bravo umbrella that you look into how we can fill that gap where our students are losing?
Yeah.
On all the arts and cultures in the schools because budgets are so tight? And where do we go from there?
So we are in the process of quantifying the data that we'd like to have to share more specifically, but I can tell you that the vast majority of the organizations that we support have programming for young people. What we heard through the regional cultural assessment was exactly what you're saying, that youth connections to arts and culture are critical to the thriving economy, it just makes better young people all the way along, makes them better grownups. So we are very focused on that, and we'll start asking questions on our grant applications so that we can again get the data. But the majority of organizations we're supporting are doing some sort of either in-school or out-of-school field trip programming. One of our large contributions that we make is to Des Moines Performing Arts, that's our largest, our most significant investment. And the number of students that they're serving at a dollar a kid is pretty outstanding. Our staff went yesterday, on Friday rather, to Moulton Elementary School in Des Moines to see a program presented by Opera Iowa, a program that actually goes into the school so the kids get the opportunity to be exposed to opera. I wish now that I had brought some of the thank you notes, because we laugh in the office about the impact that these programs have and the thoughtful way that children express themselves. In addition, we do support another program that's not through the public dollars, which I don't talk about very often because it's not supported through the public dollars. The only program Bravo runs is called Connecting Kids and Culture, and it's a joint collaboration with the Community Foundation of Greater Des Moines, and it's funded with Principal Charity Classic Dollars. Bravo is one of the beneficiaries of Principal Charity Classic Funds. Every year, it's about $150,000 that we're able to invest, and every first through fifth grade student in Bravo's service area gets funding to have either an in-class or out-of-school experience with one of Bravo's cultural partners. And last year, West Des Moines students, there were about 1,500 West Des Moines students that were able to experience field trips through that funding.
Great, okay, good. And then, secondly, there was a slide that said something about housing options, and I don't remember which slide that was, and I didn't understand.
Yep.
What is that in the context of what we do?
Yep, so Capital Crossroads Catalyst Priorities are what are listed there on the slide. Those were the eight priorities that if we advance those most aggressively, those are the ones that are gonna move our community forward. Now, interestingly enough, you might say, well Bravo's certainly not gonna do anything for housing, but I did have a meeting last week about a really cool housing project that's being considered, and they want to make sure that there's public art. It's a housing project for chronically homeless people, and they want to make sure that public art is included, not only so that the residents can benefit, but also so that they can tell their story for the community, so the community has a chance. It's a great way for us to build bridges, and I actually, art can be everywhere, and that's our goal, is to make sure that art is everywhere.
And then finally, and then I will have John answer his question, get his question asked. But I really appreciate that your guys are focusing on diversity. I've been on the board of an organization called Pyramid, and we were a benefactor of your grant monies, and that really propelled that organization and certainly helped. So there are a lot of other organizations that might not know of the work that you do, but they're starting and they have a lot of diversity focus. Any outreach strategies you all are doing to really tap into maybe that community base that might not just be as savvy to understand how to apply for Bravo and what to do and to help propel their organizations forward?
The short answer, Renee, is no. Right now, that's a gap for us. We are trying to, again, in light of the regional cultural assessment, which was really just completed about a year ago, we then followed up with a strategic plan for Bravo that called out that cultural equity is a priority for our organization and for our community. We're now at the next step of activating on that priority. It takes time, we're trying to be thoughtful and intentional about it, but we are mightily aware of the opportunities that exist, hopeful that the Diversity in Arts Leadership Program is going to help advance our education on where those opportunities might exist, and we'll certainly hope to have a better answer for you next year.
I know you were very instrumental in helping with Pyramid Theater, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
John?
Well, I was just gonna commend you, the 95% number, I think, is really important and really powerful, so money is going to what it's been designed to go to, so I think that speaks really highly of the good work that you've done. And then also compliment you on the fact that we, I forget how you phrased it, but adding some new categories for recipients, so I think it was for programming or whatever the, whatever it was, but clearly you listened to the 2080 members, they had feedback, you know, some communities maybe were too small or whatever, didn't, weren't able to access some of the funding, and now they can. So I think that's really good, 'cause, you know, when you're inflexible, that's when, that's when things don't go as well, so kudos to you for doing those things.
Thank you.
I was gonna compliment you on the same thing, I've done it several times, but I can't do it enough. I mean, you guys are flexible, you know, we talked to you before, you were doing grants to organizations whose primary mission mainly was arts and culture. And we pointed out that we had, I think, the library that applied and were wanting to do some art in the library, and instead of saying no, you guys took a look at that and kind of revamped the program to allow for people that don't have their main mission as arts and culture, but that are wanting to do something that would move arts and culture forward. And so, thank you again to what Councilman Michelson said, for being flexible and constantly listening and making changes based on the needs of the community.
Sally, you said you had a staff of three, is that correct?
Me plus two, yep.
I think that is huge in the fact that everything that you guys do with such a small staff shows that the majority of the money goes back into the communities rather than for salaries, and to me, that is really huge, so thank you for that.
Agreed.
We are, as I said, working hard to remain relevant. I do wanna be clear, we do need a little bit more, we're starting to miss opportunities because we're a little mean. But we, as I said, are always gonna keep an eye, always gonna keep an eye on the service and the stewardship. We appreciate your investment very much and want to remain worth the dollars you're contributing.
Well, thank you to you, and thank you again to Councilman Sandiger, who serves as the chair for all this work.
Well, I'll tell ya, there's some organizations that you're not excited to be a part of that are regional organizations and much less excited, much less excited to chair, but this has been an easy lift for me and an easy organization to chair, because I have a passion personally for the arts. But also Sally is an outstanding leader, and I say this a lot to Sally, but I wanna make sure it's publicly known how our organization's at a different point than we were several years ago. And frankly, I put a lot of that to Sally's leadership, so thank you, Sally. Of course, the board has done a great job and we've had great leadership, but Sally, you've really made the difference, and it's a joy to work with you.
Thank you.
Practically every day.
I know.
Which is an easy thing for me to do, so thank you very much, thanks for coming.
Thanks again, Sally, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move right in then to Mayor, Council, Manager Reports, and we'll start with Councilman Sandiger.
Nothing this time.
Nothing for me. Councilman Michelson?
Nothing for Mayor Protam.
Like that, yeah, short and sweet.
I just wanted to commend Police Chief, he's in here. We had an unfortunate incident a week or two ago, doesn't happen in West Des Moines very often. Unfortunately, there was a violent crime, and, you know, unfortunately for not only the victim, but also frankly for the alleged perpetrators, 'cause if they did it, you know, their life is ruined as well. But kudos to the Police Chief and his staff for doing a quick and efficient investigation and bringing the alleged perpetrators to justice.
Yeah, amen.
Yes.
Okay, Renee?
Yes, thank you. I do wanna share a couple of things. I did have the distinct pleasure of representing the city of West Des Moines at the luncheon when Des Moines, and West Des Moines hosted Ambassador of Israel, Ron Dimmer, and it was a delightful presentation, was very educational, and really shed light on the relations with the US and Israel, so I was very proud to represent the city of West Des Moines there. I also wanna give kudos to Althea Holcomb. I had the distinct pleasure of thanking all of her volunteers at their annual volunteer appreciation banquet last week, and it was wonderful. They have about 90 volunteers, and that give close to 13,000 hours, which is equivalent to 6.2 FTEs, to Department of Human Services. And those folks spend hours on the clothing closet, the food pantry, emergency financial assistance program, the summer lunch program, the school supply distribution program, transportation and demand services, and friendship connection. And so, it does not go without notice that Althea is a phenomenal leader of that particular enterprise and that department, and the volunteers just love her, and they love being involved. And I was able to shake the hand and congratulate someone that's been volunteering for that organization for 20-plus years, 20 years, just coming in and volunteering, and she was so proud to do it. So, Althea, to you and your team, I say thank you, and thanks for stewarding those hours and those individuals to keep coming back year after year to make a difference, and is what is a good service to West Des Moines, so I wanted to share that. And then finally, I wanted to just take a moment, a personal privilege, to extend my heartfelt condolences to the family of Bill Stowe. I know that he is in Des Moines, but he is, has been a public figure. We all know that he spoke his truth, while we may not have agreed with some of the kinds of things that he wanted to do. He spoke his truth, and he was an advocate for water quality, an advocate for flood victims, and also he kept you safe in storms and told you what was all going on. So this community in Des Moines has lost a public servant that I think was the epitome of what public servants are to do, so my heart goes out to his family for the untimely loss of Mr. Bill Stowe.
Absolutely. Anything else? Okay, Tom?
Yes, so just a couple of announcements. One, Chief Jeff Demmermuth, after 35 years of service at the city of West Des Moines, will be retiring on May 31st, and I just wanted to acknowledge him at this meeting, and of course, there'll be some type of cake and punch and whatever else they have planned for him at EMS. He's been not only leader of EMS, he's also WestCom leader for years, and to get that up and going, and a lot of innovations come from his department, so I just wanted to give Jeff a shout-out for the council, Mayor and Council. And the other, Brett Hodney is, he's celebrating 30 years of service for the city of West Des Moines, which is also a significant milestone. Brett, are you back there? There he is.
Yep.
So I'd like to give special recognition to both of them, we appreciate their tremendous service to our community.
That's it.
We've got great institutional knowledge here in the city with a lot of our staff members, and I'll be sad to see Jeff go, but, you know, wish him well in his retirement, and hopefully there's a roast involved.
I wanna be involved in that one.
Okay. Consent agenda, item four, are there any items that any councilperson wishes to pull?
4-0.
Okay, 4-0, any other items? Okay, can I get approval for the remainder? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, Kevin, item 4-0, approval of crossing guard agreement, West Des Moines Community School District and City of Windsor Heights.
I guess this is probably for Chief Scott, I'm not exactly sure. I'm presuming he's gonna be the one to answer this question. I got two questions. The first one is, I know that this is gonna, you might as well come up, this is gonna alleviate police staff from having to oversee the crossing guard patrol people, but my question is, what is the cost to doing this with, what's the name of the company? All City Management Services, what's the cost compared to doing it in-house? That's the first question.
Less.
Okay, that's a shock.
Actually, significantly less, and I'm not gonna throw a number out there.
That's fine.
Because it's been, we've been working on this project for eight months almost. Probably six months ago, I could give you some better numbers, but I can tell you from our end, we're saving money on this deal.
Excellent. The second one is then, and I'm guessing I probably know the answer to this, but currently, today, if a crossing guard is absent, a police officer or community service officer goes up and fills in. Will that continue, or will that go away under this ACM?
That will go away under this agreement with this company. This is a company that Des Moines currently uses, and a company that hires people to be on standby. So if they have a late call-in, somebody's sick, something pops up, then they have a pool of people that they can call into. Why is it significant that Des Moines has that? Because now we're getting a metro pool of people, so he doesn't think that he's gonna have to hire as many, 'cause he'll share those resources.
Okay, and this is for everybody in the audience and those listening and watching online, how are the applicants vetted then to be sure that the people that are watching their kids at the intersections are above board?
We will vet them with the company.
And I assume they go through criminal background checks and things of that nature?
Correct.
Excellent, all right. With that, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Thanks, G.
Okay, any discussion? Further discussion? Please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item, old business, item 5A, Amendment to City Code, Title IX Zoning, Chapter One, Entitlements, Process and Procedures, Chapter Two, Zoning Rules and Definitions, Chapter Four, Zoning Districts and Maps, Chapter Five, Agricultural Open Spaces and Zoning Districts, Chapter Seven, Setback and Bulk Density Regulations, Chapter Ten, Performance Standards, and Chapter Nineteen, Landscaping to Update the Regulations Pertaining to Building Setback and Separation Requirements and Bulk Density Regulations, City-initiated. We've got approval, the second reading of the ordinance. Can I get a motion?
Move, consideration the second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Please vote. Oops.
Four yes, one no, an ordinance demanding the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by many, Title IX Zoning to update regulations pertaining- Iowa 2019 by amending Title IX Zoning to update regulations pertaining to building setback and separation requirements and bulk density regulations for commercial and residential developments within the city.
Move approval of the second reading.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Four yes, one no.
Okay. Item five B, Amendment to City Code, Title IX Zoning, Chapter Five, Agricultural Open Spaces and Residential Zoning District, Chapter Ten, Performance Standards, amend City Code to modify garage requirements and establish a waiver process for a single-family detached dwellings, City-initiated. We've got the approval, the second reading of the ordinance. And I know that there is a, there's supposed to be a memo on the dais or we were going to be addressing some questions and concerns that were brought up last time in regards to, well, I think there was also something Dick was going to be addressing that kept conflicting issues. So, do we want to address that?
Mr. Mayor Protem, first of all, there was some question, I think at the time that this originally went through was sort of the direction of the council, that we put a requirement on that, that if the landowner or the property owner sold a house within a period of time, there'd be a return to the city or some involvement or requirement that a garage be built or there'd be some accommodation to take care of that. It went to public, or excuse me, planning zoning and they said, or their position was that it should be one year as opposed to 10. So, there was a Development and Planning Subcommittee meeting today with councilmembers Michelson and Hardman. And it was determined at that time that a five-year encumbrance on the property of 100%. So, in other words, if a person of 80% LMI, the low and moderate income, bought the house and they sold it within the five-year period, they'd have to pay the city $20,000 back. If they sold it in the sixth year, then that would be free and clear.
If they sold it to a non-LMI.
Yeah.
Okay. And the 20,000 is based on?
Well, that's an approximate cost today in today's dollars to build a garage.
And we're going to add a CPI or some type of index on that.
Okay.
It won't be 20,000 10 years from now.
Okay. So, the ordinance that we're going to approve tonight is going to include that there is a five-year encumbrance on the property for people that are LMI?
Right. The ordinance itself will simply address the fact that if they're 80% LMI, that there'll be a waiver on the property. We'll have a policy aside from that through resolution in which the deed restriction will be placed. It's a five-year deed restriction if it's sold to somebody that's greater than 80%. I think the second issue might have been Councilmember Trevilian's issue about non-conforming uses. And if a garage was destroyed or burned down or whatever, would there be a requirement to rebuild a garage on the property?
No, Dick. My concern was that we've got a city ordinance that says that if the garage is falling down, we can require the property owner to either have it taken down for safety reasons or we will have it taken down due to our code enforcement.
Yeah.
And there's nothing that says, and another garage gets filled. So, that's where I've got this disconnect of this. New ordinance is going to say that you can, well, the old one's going to stay out there, that if it's falling down, we can have it taken down. And it doesn't have to go back. But this one then says that if you build a house that's, in this case, not LMI, then you have to have a garage.
Well, and we've taken garages down with that.
Yes.
The only problem that you encounter is that, I suppose, if it was, if we took that garage down and that person was LMI, 80%, then you could give them a waiver. They'd qualify for this program. However, if they're not LMI, a lot of times, the reason that that garage fell apart in the first place, they don't have the resources even though they might be more than 80%.
So, you do not feel that?
It's a policy question for you.
You don't feel that the, we have got conflicting ordinances based on what we're passing tonight? That our current ordinance can stay in effect that Kevin's talking about that where if the garage is deteriorating, we would essentially, in that case, require them to, to take care of the garage and, but you're saying if the person is LMI, then we would potentially take a look at that and allow them to take the garage down if they applied for a waiver based on income guidelines. So, these two are in harmony.
That's the question. And I'm saying that that's, that would be consistent and that makes some sense if they're 80%.
I think that makes sense as well.
But currently, if the garage, I've got two garages, one attached, one detached. So, if the detached garage at my house starts to fall down, the city can force me to get it in shape or they will take it down. But there's nothing that says I have to build another garage in that spot. And that's my concern. So, it's not, it has nothing to do with your income level because we've got garages all over the city that are, some have been converted into residential living spaces and there's no garage currently with the house. Attached garages that are out there. And then we've got some that we have taken down. And so, I don't know that it's, that it's LMI garages that have come down.
So, are you saying?
It's never been, it's never been pursued that you, your garage was required to come down for lack of being structurally sound. And, oh, now you have to build a new one. Because obviously, if you can't afford to keep the garage up, then you can't afford to build a new one. So, again, it's got nothing to do with income levels, the current situation.
Right. So, you're saying if the garage was torn down, are we going to make them put, put a garage back up or not?
Right. That's what I'm saying, that we've got this imbalance here. But if you build a new one, you have to, you have to build a garage unless you're 80% LMI. But no matter what your income level, if we can require your garage to be torn down because it's falling down and it just becomes a concrete slab.
And that's not a legal issue, that's a policy issue. Do you want to impose that requirement on them or do you want to?
No, that's why I think this whole thing just needs to go away.
No, I, I think personally, leaving the ordinance in place the way it is makes sense to me. And the person should be required to rebuild the garage or, or patch the garage, whatever they have to do. If, if we end up having to, to tear it down, unless they meet the income guidelines, they're going to have to put it back. I mean, that's, that's what makes sense. That's what we would do under the current code.
But you've also got the question that?
If they, if they apply, they say, well, I'm, I meet the income guidelines to not put it back, then we'll take that up at the time. If they don't, they're going to have to put the garage back.
Unless you want to just go forward and say this only applies to new structures and that, there's a lot of non-conforming structures out there now, whether the garage, you know, they had a garage and it came down or it just never was built with a garage. We're not going to do anything to them. So...
If you're going to go down this path, I don't think you can force somebody to build a garage because theirs came down. Because again, they would have, if they could have afforded to keep it up, they would have. So, how do you then force them to build a garage when they couldn't maintain the one?
It's got a lot of tentacles on it.
If they can't, if they can't afford to put one back up, then they will apply for a waiver through the program. And if they qualify, they'll get a waiver. If not, they're going to have to put the garage back up. I, I don't see this happening a whole lot, to be honest with you. But I think what we have in place is, is fine. I don't think it conflicts at all. I think Dick has said that tonight and I think...
So, how do you handle the properties out there that they've converted the house, the attached garage? And I can bring in pictures next, in two weeks, I'd be happy to.
Sure.
Of properties that have taken the attached garage, converted it to living space, and they're not, there's no garage on the property.
They're a non, existing non-conforming.
So, are you going to force them to build a garage?
No.
It's no different?
They're existing non-conforming.
Then it's no different than if you're, if you, if the garage comes down for, for structural issues? How do you force them to build a garage when you're not forcing these other people to convert their living space back to garage?
Well, Kevin, during, our current, our current code requires them to have garage.
Yeah.
So, under your situation, they'd be in violation of current code.
So, I think we should, we should.
So, I, I think what we're doing here does not conflict with current code. I think that it makes...
Nothing says that you have to continue a garage. It just says when the house was built, you have to have a garage.
Today, there's a garage, today, there's a garage requirement in place in the City of West Des Moines. The action that we're taking tonight is going to allow for a waiver if people meet certain income guidelines that we've got outlined here. Then we've also got, in, in the ordinance, based on your input and others, we've got a situation today where, under current ordinance, if somebody goes to rehab their house, remodel their house, put on an addition, and I believe they, they do an addition to, or rehab more than 50% or some percentage, then it triggers the garage requirement. We are eliminating that in, in this ordinance. So, people in Valley Junction, for example, that want to do a remodel, put on an addition, but after we pass this ordinance, the garage requirement will no longer be triggered. I think that's a good thing. I think that's going to help Valley Junction. So, I think what we're passing tonight makes a lot of sense.
This is just not Valley Junction. You've got properties out here west of 50th Street on Tamara Lane that don't have garages. So, it's not, we've got houses around the city that don't have garages.
It will only apply after we pass this ordinance to new construction.
Okay. But I'm just saying, you keep talking about Valley Junction.
Because that's what I know you're concerned with.
I'm just concerned that this, the whole thing's ridiculous.
Okay. I think.
I don't.
If you simply apply it to...
Lynn, do you want to shed any light on this subject?
Not really.
Involve yourself in this debate.
Lynn Tweed, Director of Development Services. Per Kevin's comment, if we have a garage that comes down and we have not done this today, it would be a code enforcement action against them to put a new garage in. That would be across the city. I don't know how many situations we have where they've either been converted, taken down, which homes don't have garages. As just a carte blanche, we are adding in here of anybody that doesn't have them today. We're just going to consider them grandfathered. So, it'd be moving forward. You do run the risk of two weeks from now, you tell someone to take down their garage, they don't meet 80%, 80% AMI, you're back to putting in a garage. So, there is a, there is a point of unfairness in this if we require somebody to take it down because it's not standing properly and then tell them, you get to spend $20,000 to put it back up.
Except you could also look at it, it's a non-conforming use and it's not been destroyed to 50% the entire house and garage, and just call it a non-conforming that's, you know, non-conforming.
If you're going to go down this path, I think that's what we need to do.
Okay. So, is there something that we would need to do tonight to, if we wanted to do that?
Well, you could give us direct, I'm sorry. You could give us direction and when we bring back that deed restriction, we can include, you know, a policy that says, we can write the policy pursuant to, you're saying all new construction should be, have a waiver if they meet the LMI requirement.
Okay. So, can we pass what we've got tonight and then address that in a later council meeting in one way, shape, or form, based on whatever makes the most sense?
Because that's really an implementation of the ordinance as opposed to the ordinance itself.
Yeah. I don't anticipate this going to happen a lot, but...
We've taken down one garage under a nuisance violation since I've been here, so...
Okay.
And I, and I just want to weigh in on the discussion a little bit as well because really, as we sit here as leaders in this West Des Moines, one of our biggest issues is dealing with affordable housing. And it doesn't mean a certain group of folks. It means individuals that want to live and work in West Des Moines and, and afford it. And so, we are attempting to create a situation that allows us to move the needle in some direction toward helping citizens be able to live here. And so, we can nitpick a whole lot of things and add this and that to that. We can do that if we want to. But we have got to decide if we are about moving the needle on allowing others to live here and afford to live here and not have to work here and go find some place in Des Moines.
Right.
Because that is what we hear as leaders every day. So, I believe this ordinance and Habitat for Humanity was there today and extremely excited about the direction that we're going. So, while this ordinance might have some tentacles that affect some other things, let's figure it all out.
Agreed.
But let's not forget the intent of what we're trying to do as leaders here. And that's to create an environment here in West Des Moines where people can live here that, and, and enjoy living here and can afford to live here. And we as leaders have to address that. We have to get off this needle and do something about it. This moves us in that right direction.
I agree. Thank you very much, Renee. Appreciate it. I guess my direction would be to bring, bring this issue maybe back to development and planning and work through that and try to figure out what's the best way to address what Kevin has brought up.
We'll propose a policy and then just bring it back to them and they can make any changes they think.
Okay, sounds good. And this was all done, to clarify, before we got a motion in a second. Can I get a motion on the second reading?
I'll move.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes, I just want to follow up with what Renee said. Renee, I agree with you 100%. I just don't think that this takes it far enough. And that's why I'm not going to support this. I think the garage requirement just needs to go away. I don't think it needs to be based on income. I don't think we're going to see that many houses built without a garage. The market's going to dictate it. The majority of the people want garages. It's already been talked about from staff that other communities don't have this requirement and they're not having houses built without garages. So, I just don't think it takes it far enough. And that's why I'm not going to support it. It just needs to just be eliminated.
And, and I would disagree with what you're saying, Kevin, because I have seen in Ankeny where they did not require garages in a neighborhood that the aesthetics were not very good. And so, I think this is a perfect balance of allowing people to have affordable homes in West Des Moines and having some nice aesthetics throughout our community. I do think that the large majority of people will probably build houses with garage. But obviously, there are cases in other cities where they don't have the requirements that they're not doing that. And I don't think that's something we want for our community. So, anyway, any other discussion?
Are we?
This is, this is on the consideration of the second reading of the ordinance. And we'll have to do a third reading at the next meeting because it was a four to one vote at the first reading.
And get clarification on that.
And get, and the clarification, which will go through development and planning and it'd be addressed in a separate resolution or ordinance.
And I just want to say I appreciate your clarification, Councilman Trevilian, on where you stand.
Okay, please vote.
Four yes, one no. An ordinance amending the City Code to the City of West Des Moines Iowa 2019 by amending Title IX Zoning, Chapter Five, Agricultural Open Space and Residential Zoning District, and Chapter Ten, Performance Standards to modify garage requirements and establish a waiver process for single-family detached dwellings.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Please vote.
Four yes, one no.
Okay. Item five C, Sugar Creek Estates, located approximately at the northeast corner of 100th Street and Stagecoach Drive. Designate residential medium-density RMA zoning on approximately 27 acres. Sugar Creek Estates LLC. We have a motion for approval, the second reading, waiver, the third, and adoption in final form. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes. An ordinance amending official zoning map in the City Code to the City of West Des Moines Iowa 2019 by amending Title IX Zoning, Chapter Four, Zoning Districts and Maps.
Okay. Can I get a motion for approval, the second reading?
I'll move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, can I get a motion on waiver, the third reading?
Uh, waiver, the third reading, adopt in final form.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Please vote.
Five yes.
Okay. We are into public hearings and we don't have a lot of them today. Item six A, we're being asked to continue to the May 6th, 2019 City Council Meeting. Can I get a motion?
Continuation. Second.
Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Item six B, I believe we're also being asked to, to...
Withdraw.
Okay. The, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission deferred on this, didn't take it up. Is that correct?
It's a withdrawal, isn't it?
Oh, it's withdrawal? Okay, they're asking to withdraw it.
Move to withdraw.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay. Item six C, this is a time and place for a public hearing to consider West Grand Business Park, Des Moines University, northwest corner of South Jordan Creek Parkway and Grand Avenue. Amend comprehensive plan, land use map to change approximately 85 acres from business park to office and amend the planned unit development, PUD, to only allow SIC 8221, colleges, universities, and professional schools within parcel eight initiated by W&amp;G McKinney Farms LC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
March 29th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
The Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of seven yes, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the comp plan amendment and rezoning request.
Okay. Anybody from the audience wishing to address the City Council on item six C? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. We have got a resolution and, and an ordinance and we need to take them separately. Can I get a motion on the resolution for approval of the comprehensive plan amendment?
I'll move.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I, I need to abstain from the vote since I'm a trustee.
Okay. Please vote.
Abstain should be one of the options, the yellow button on there. Four yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, now we've got an ordinance for approval of the first reading.
Move consideration of first reading.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Four yes, one abstention, an ordinance submitting the City Code to the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, and ordinance numbers 1373, 1812, and 2299 pertaining to planned unit development, district regulations, and guidelines.
Move approval of the first reading, second.
Okay, any discussion? Please vote.
Four yes, one abstention.
Okay, Item 6D, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider agreement for private development property tax rebate program initiated by Dalton Partners, LLC, and Mega St. Kilda, LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we heard, have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody from the audience wishing to address the City Council on Item 6D? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare this public hearing closed and we've got one resolution for approval of the agreement.
Move approval of the agreement.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
It'd be a great, great addition for us.
Great addition.
Yeah, I agree.
Five yes.
Okay, Item 6E, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider agreement for private development property improvement fund and regulatory compliance fund initiated by Dalton Partners, LLC, and Mega St. Kilda, LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to address the City Council on Item 6C, 6E, pardon me? Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare this public hearing closed. We've got a resolution for approval of the agreement. Can I get a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, Item 6F, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider agreement for private development initiated by Comport, LLC, and Legacy Capital Partners, Inc. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to address the City Council on Item 6F? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare this public hearing closed. We've got a resolution for approval of the agreement.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, Item 6G, this is the time and place for a public hearing to considering issuance of not to exceed $6 million in general obligation urban renewal bonds, Series 2019B initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody from the audience wishing to address the City Council on Item 6G? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed. We've got a resolution to institute proceedings to take additional action. Can I get a motion?
Nope.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Item 6H, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider issuance of not to exceed 9.5 million in general obligation urban renewal bonds, Series 2019C initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the, the date the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to address the City Council on Item 6H? Please come to the microphone, state your name and record, name and address for the Seeing no one yet again, I will declare this public hearing closed. We've got a resolution to institute proceedings to take additional action.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Five yes.
Look how Steve goes out of town when we have 25 public hearings. Item 6I, 6I, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider issuance of not to exceed 6.27 million in general obligation urban renewal bonds, Series 2019D initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comment to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody from the audience wishing to address the City Council on Item 6I? Please come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare this public hearing closed. We've got a resolution to institute proceedings to take additional action. Can I get a motion?
Move approval, second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes.
Item 6J, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider issuance of not to exceed 2.15 million in general obligation urban renewal bonds, Series 2019E initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to address the City Council on Item 6J? Please step up to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed and we've got a resolution to institute proceedings to take additional action. Can I get a motion?
Move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Five yes.
Item 6K, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider South 85th Street, Cascade Avenue, DeMille Civic Parkway initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date that the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to address the Council on Item 6K? Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed. We've got a resolution for approval of acquisition of agricultural property. Can I get a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Item 6L, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Boonville Road Construction, South 88th Street to west of South 100th Street initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date that the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to address the City Council on Item 6L? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare this public hearing closed. We have got two resolutions and a motion which we can take at the same time. Can I please get a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
6M, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider 2019 HMA resurfacing program initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comment to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to address the City Council on Item 6M? Please come to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed. We've got two resolutions and a motion which, again, we can take together.
Move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Item 6N, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider neighborhood park signage initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date that the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to address, address the City Council on Item 6N? Please come to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed. We've got a resolution and two motions which I believe we can take at the same time. Can I get, and the motion, one of the motions is defer award of the contract till May 6th, 2019. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yes, I'd like whoever it is, Sally, to come up. I, my question is while you're on the way up here, what was the next lowest bidder in terms of price? I know this was at 248,000 and we were estimating 450,000, so it's about 200,000 less, which is great, but you want to check out references, I get that part. I'm just curious, how far was this below the next lowest bidder?
Two forty-nines in the pack.
Yeah, it was about $1,500, I think.
Oh, so it wasn't much of a difference?
No, Sally Orkis, Director of Parks and Recreation, that's right, it's about $1,500. It was very close.
Yeah, and that works out to be about 10 grand if I added them all upright. There's 22 signs, two parks that we're going to be putting in, so it's about 10, 12, 11 grand a sign, something like that. So I'm curious, how shy of Hattery came, Ha- Haverdy?
Hattery.
Hattery came up with close to 20 grand a sign instead of 10. Just curious about that.
Um, you know, they were basing it on material costs and pricing that they had seen on other signs that were similar, so, you know, pricing just must be really good right now for this type of work.
Okay, great, thanks.
So with that then, if there's only $1,500 difference between the two bids and there were only two bids, why not go ahead and award the contract? I mean, I could see it if we were, you know, $20,000 separating on the signs, but we're not.
Right, the low bidder is an out-of-state sign company that we are not familiar with. No one in the metro area has worked with them before. Their references are also from out-of-state, so we just wanted to take that two weeks just to do our due diligence in making sure that they were a, a good contractor.
Smart.
So if you do that due diligence and you, and you find out that you're not, you're not sure that they can do the work, I mean, would you just, at that point in time, would you have to come back to the council or would you just award it to the next highest or next lowest bidder, I guess?
No, we would come back to council on May 6th to award that contract.
Sounds good. Okay, is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote.
Hey, Sal, you might as well stay up here because you're up for the next one, too.
Five yes.
Item 6O, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Pinedale Park Improvements initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody from the audience wishing to address the City Council on Item 6O? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed. We've got two resolutions and a motion that we can take at the same time. Can I get a motion?
Move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, I've got a question on this. Sally, this park has been there for 20-plus years, I'm guessing, maybe more than that, right? This is the one at 33rd and Woodland or 300 block of Woodland, right?
It is, it has not been a park that long, it has not been public property that long.
Okay, so how long ago did it become public property?
Was it part of the Ed Bosin fallout?
Yes, it would have occurred at the time the apartments that were there were turned into condos. And so part of their parkland dedication requirements were satisfied by deeding this property to the city as a public park.
Okay, so with it being private property for so many years and the residents in that area, I'm not, I guess I'm not certain that the residents are going to understand that now all of a sudden this is a city park. The second part of that is, how do they get to it? Because you got to go through the private property, as I look at it, to get to, there's an easement through there off of Woodland or off of?
Public property comes out to Woodland, so there will be.
With drive access, though?
We have an agreement with the condos that.
That's what I'm saying, you got to go through their parking lot.
Yes.
So can you use the one off of, is it pleasant to the sou- or to the north? Can you get to it from there that goes into the cul-de-sac as well as off of Woodland or just off Woodland?
No, just off Woodland.
And how many parking stalls are available for people that want to come down from, say, 28th and Woodland to use it? Because there's about a half a dozen from what it looks like to me.
And that's, that's what I was just going to say. I believe there are six, six parking spaces. And this is a mini park, so, you know, it's, it really.
Yeah, but we're putting $321,000 into this.
Well, we've got other city parks that are similar. Kiwanis Park doesn't have any parking at all. I mean, you got to park on the street.
Right.
I, I get that, but it's, it's, my concern is that it's clearly a park, it's not tucked back in behind houses, you know, go through a parking lot, private parking lot to get to it. I'm just.
There will be a sidewalk going off of Woodland into the park, and then we will be putting one of our new park signs just right up there along Woodland next to the sidewalk. So, you know, from the street and from the sidewalk in front of the park, it will obviously be a public park. We've also, you know, included a wide area of the neighborhood in on communication about the site plan and invited comment from them on the design of the park, so.
And we did have one, one gentleman come in to the Parks and Rec Board meeting to address the Park and Rec Board on the park, right?
Yeah.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that they.
So there's been a neighborhood input given?
I feel like there has been, yes. I mean, we've direct mailed out to the service area for the park on the site plan portion of the process. And, you know, probably one of the sites that we'll do an ice cream social ad is going to be this park so that we can kind of introduce it to the, the neighborhood. And, you know, with the park sign right there, too, I think that's one other way to make it obviously a city park. It'll have the city logo right there on the sign.
Okay, all right, good.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, please vote. Okay, Item 6P, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider garage door replacements, public services facility, and public safety stations, number 17, 18, and 19 initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date that the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to address the City Council on Item 6P? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed. We've got a resolution and a motion which we can take together. Make a motion, okay, is there a second? Okay, any discussion?
Question. It says we're putting in 10 garage doors at Public Safety Station 17 at 14th and Railroad. This is the same station that, uh, six years, eight years ago. Time gets away from me. We put like five or seven million dollars into totally redoing that building, so...
It wasn't that long.
The garage was not part of, these garage doors were not part of that, it was just the brick, or can somebody answer that? Yeah, and maybe it wasn't that long ago, I'm not sure, but it's just...
It was a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Two, three years ago.
Hmm, it's been more than that.
Yeah.
Brian, I'm a SAD city engineer, I just conferred with our, uh, fire chief that, um, these were not a part of that project. So this is, this is something that we didn't include in that project before.
And that was like mold in the walls and the bricks.
Yeah, water coming through with the bricks.
Crazy stuff.
I knew that, I just wasn't sure that if we had replaced the doors then, we're doing it again, so, okay. I just want to make sure we're not having any further issues down there. And how long ago was that, that we did that? Linda, can you just chime up, was...
About three years ago, probably.
That's what I think, two, three.
Yeah, I don't recall.
I don't know, all right. Somebody get that for me and email me, please. I'm just curious, all right.
Any further discussion on this item? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 6Q, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider traffic signals at Grand Avenue and Scenic Valley Drive initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to address the City Council on item 6Q? Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed. We've got res- two resolutions and a motion which we can take together. Can I get a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Can't believe it, we've reached the end.
By the way, it's 18, I counted up. You said 25, and you were far off. I know you meant it as a joke.
Oh, man, okay, item 6R. This is the time and the place for a public hearing to consider public services facility, salt storage building maintenance initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to address the City Council on item 6R, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record. Now is your last chance on public hearings, going for a perfect record. Okay, seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed, and we've got a resolution and a motion which we can take together. Can I get a motion, please?
The move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, this is for the people at home. Brett, you might as well come up. I know we're going to be making, uh, investments out at, uh, 88th and Grand at the new Public Works facility. But just so everybody's clear, we're keeping this facility at South 16th in operation as well for the salt storage and various things like that, correct? So we're not putting $69,000 into it and then basically throwing that away when we move out west.
Brett Hodney, Public Services Director, that is correct. Um, we'll be constructing a facility out at the new site at South 88th and Grand, but also logistically, we will keep this salt storage facility, too. We will be operating out of both facilities, just with the large geographic territory that we have to cover for service delivery, um, and the fact that, you know, trucks need to charge at a, a station that's closed. But this building was constructed in 1986, so this is, you know, roof replacement and things that we haven't done much to it since then, so...
All right, thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion on item 6R? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Five yes.
Item 7A, Western Hills Elementary Classroom addition, 639th Street. Approval of a major modification to the site plan to construct the building addition. West Des Moines Community School District got a resolution for approval of the site plan.
Move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Item 8, receive, file, and/or refer, we have no items. Uh, item 9, other matters, is there any other matter that any council person would like to raise at this time? Okay, uh, Jamie, legislative updates.
Good news is your days of 15 public hearings will be over.
Eighteen. Eighteen.
Don't tell me you're sure.
Was that May 6th?
Yeah, we've got 9A with Dart as well.
The Dart route, um, discussion was at May 6th.
Yes.
Oh, that's been moved? Oh. Oh, okay. Okay.
It was just an error.
Oh, okay, got it.
So, um, House File 773 is the, um, now floor eligible version of the property tax, uh, uh, reform bill. But we're also calling it the, um, growth cap legislation, I suppose. So, we've sent you information about that. Um, we're awaiting the Senate version, and the busier we keep rest, the less likely for that to come out, I guess.
We don't have much time left, so it should be coming out soon.
Look forward to that. Yeah, so, we're crawling towards Sinodai, um, May 2nd, I think.
May 3rd.
3rd. So, um, this, this bill, I mean, we've talked about it here before, we've sent you information. Dubuque sent some really great information. We're just trying to engage with, with people and then wait patiently to see what the Senate version looks like and whether or not those two chambers can come together on a, a similar version of the bill. Just to reiterate, you know, it would significantly hamper the amount of growth that is eligible in West Des Moines. And, uh, also really does not leave us any room to account for, um, state mandated 411 pension rates for our public safety, uh, employees and, uh, IFRS for, um, the balance of our employee base. So, uh, it limits our growth to 2% annually. Makes it difficult for a city like us to be able to afford to, to grow and, and meet the needs of our residents. And for you all to really vote on a budget and create a budget and, and have that budget be your own really removes that, um, that cap, that capability for you folks. So, it's been talked about a lot, I mean, I can answer questions if there's other questions about it, but it's a, a very large deal and it would, um, it, it could make things very difficult for us. Most importantly, I think, uh, we would most assuredly lose our AAA bond rating status because it also has a 25% cap on, on the amount of, uh, general fund balance reserves that we're allowed to keep. So, not having that ability to, um, have the flexibility, uh, of reserving more or designating more funds